Mrs. Cackill? Here. Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mrs. Intechar?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here. Ms. Dahlquist, would you please hear this in particular?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since this is a meeting of the committee to hold the board, I will ask for a motion on the second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop.
So moved. Second?
Moved on Mrs. Crabtree and sent it by Mrs. Intechar. Senator, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Intechar?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Dr. Schuler?
Thank you. So we have one item on our workshop agenda for tonight, and that is our annual update for the board on our Vision 2018 student learning measures. Update's gonna look a little bit different this year in the fact that typically at this point each year when we do the student learning update, we have a number of different assessment measures that we're able to report out. This year, what we do not have that we've typically had in the past is any of the K-8 state assessment information. We have not received any part results from the state. And so this year, with the help and the blessing of the Teaching and Learning Committee, Ms. Dahlquist has organized this student learning update really around our Vision 2018 dashboard. So we're gonna provide the board with an update on our key measures as well as dive a little bit deeper into some of our school improvement efforts because that's a huge area of focus within student learning, and then we'll answer questions. And I think I do always want to say at the onset that this annual update is not intended to be the only time that we report out on or discuss measures of student learning. This is intended to be kind of the invitation to a discussion that certainly will carry over, you know, through other curriculum initiatives and discussions you have during the year, but we do always want to kind of pick a point in time where we report out on those results. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Faith. There you go.
And thank you for this opportunity to talk about student learning. As Dr. Schuler said, we are kind of in a strange place in education. Usually when I'm here in October, we're talking about state test results, and tonight, we're going to back away a little bit from that. We're still gonna talk about our own measurements of that, but we're also gonna take an opportunity to talk about those things that cannot be measured on a standardized test. And I had the opportunity to go around to each staff and present to them also this kind of fresh approach or maybe a new emphasis on things that can't be measured on standardized achievement tests. And I'm gonna start off the presentation by giving you just a little bit of a taste of what that presentation looked like, then we're gonna talk about the dashboard, and then I'm gonna ask questions, and then after that, I just have a really brief update on a few of the things that we're doing with curriculum. So as I went around and talked with the schools, we spent some time thinking about what's the long-term goal. And the long-term goal is kind of scary. We don't know what the world's gonna look like. Everything is changing really quickly. If you think about just what SIRI can do in my own house, my son is really quick to show how SIRI can graph his algebra problems and look at all of that. My husband does not share my enjoyment of math, and he has a math app on his phone that you can just hover it over any computation and even some word problems, and without entering anything into a calculator, it will give you the solution. So some of the things that technology is providing for us is really changing how we instruct and what we look at. So as everything is changing, and if you think about just in the last five years, how much technology has changed our lives, or how much access to different content and knowledge we have, we are not the purveyors of we have all the content to the students because SIRI can give quite a bit of that content. What we need to make sure is we're the experts at providing learning opportunities that are to prepare our students for that. They need to be able to continue to learn when they leave us. They have to be able to collaborate. They have to be able to get along. They have to have the stamina to be able to adapt in all of these changes, and we need to make sure that our learning environment is doing that. So it means that our highest priority is just getting them ready to continually learn and to enjoy learning and to know how to evaluate the tools that they might use for learning. That high school diploma just means that you're getting ready to start your lifelong journey in learning, regardless of whether you're going on to college, whether you're going to a career, whether you're going to be a stay-home parent. All the access to the information in the world is changing. Our students are gonna need to have those skills to be ready. So it doesn't mean that we gotta rethink everything that we're doing and we have to start over. It just means that we have to look with a new lens for our learning environment. And in District 200, we've done a good job of talking about wellness and fine arts and social-emotional learning and athletic abilities, all those types of things, and we have to make sure we have a balance between what we're doing on standardized tests and the things that can be measured there, and also things like creativity and problem solving. You probably saw the research. They went around and interviewed all the CEOs of the top 500 companies, and what's the one thing that they wanted from today's graduates? Creativity. Not really easy to measure on a standardized test. So we have to make sure that we're doing both and balancing this. Why I need to make sure is I went around to schools that they didn't say, hey, Faith doesn't care about student achievement scores. That's not the message. They still need to do well. They still need to do all of that, but it's not the whole complete picture. So we have Vision 2018. Dr. Schuler and the board, we've all worked together to talk about what does this mean for facilities, community engagement, finance, but the heart of that piece of paper, and it's not by accident that it's in the middle, is the learning environment. Because we don't get the learning environment right and do the best we can to prepare our students for the future, all those things don't matter as much. We have to be grounded in what we're doing for that learning environment piece. So this is the FIT learning environment. Vision, you've seen it before, but some of those phrases that jump out to me, the environment has to enable learners to access information, share it, collaborate, create, anytime, anywhere. The experiences that we create at school need to foster critical thinking. They need to mirror real-world applications. We need to meet individual needs while still making a community of learners, and we have to do that while we master skills. Big job. So the FIT team, the Future of Instruction and Technology team, further defined, because the vision statement's up there at the top, what some of those things look like. What does contextualized learning look like? What does differentiation look like? And we decided to tackle two main areas, and we're tackling standards mastery and collaboration and creation. So as I went around to the schools, it's really important to get everybody to focus because just the amount of brain research, state mandates, best instructional practices, new interventions, new ideas, all of those things, and most of them are really good, but there's no way we can do them all. We have to get focused as an organization. So we are working, as you know, on the FIT learning environment, bringing it down to collaboration and creation, standards mastery, and the tools that we're using to get there are the PLCs, that professional learning community, where teachers to work together, and technology. Then within that, as it get a little sharper focus, schools are deciding within standards mastery and collaboration creation, what's just right for them. So we're keeping it tight on what the focus is, but they're individualizing it for their school. And then the PLCs within the schools are deciding and defining it. So if we're really working on a summary of text at one of the schools, that's gonna look different at sixth grade, at fifth grade than it will at second grade. So PLCs are gonna look at that, and then they bring it down to student learning. And that student learning again is not just those things that are mastered on achievement test. It's all of the learning that goes into that. The staff received this unbelievably well. Got roses, got some chocolate. They're very, very excited about the focus that Dr. Schuler has brought in, and then also this, yes, test scores are really important, but we really need to work on social-emotional learning. We really need to work on creativity. And that does not mean that we're going back to the days of anybody learns whatever they wants, right? Forty percent is the magic number for brain research on what it should be on direct instruction versus students collaborating and creating. So that is the message that's going out there, and it's working. I'm already seeing some of the differences as I go in to do classroom walkthroughs. So now let's talk a little bit about how we measure those things with standards mastery. Usually, we talk about state tests, but Park is not backed up. We are gonna talk about the district dashboard, and then we have our own district assessments, but I am kind of proud to say that in District 200, we don't spend an inordinate amount of time on testing. We try to get it right, get the snapshots, get the information we need, and then direct instruction. And then we also, I want to make sure, and I'll give a little bit of a glimpse into that, that we have all this data, but we dive into it by looking, by classroom, by school, by subgroups, all of that kind of a thing. So while I'm giving you a preview, this doesn't begin to look at the depth of analysis of data that we look at. So I took a picture of this this morning, just so you can see what it looks like now because by Friday, this is all gonna change. This is the screenshot of the Vision 2018, the goal dashboard. After this presentation, the updates that I'm gonna give you are going to be made public and be on the dashboard. So first, gonna talk about our goal for Road to Readiness in math. I want to remind you, this is off of a district assessment. These are the assessments that we created off of our Common Core and our additional math standards that we have. The initial baseline and 2015 status are the same because it's the first year that we've had those tests. We then went and looked at how to create a goal, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of glimpse of how we do that. We don't sit around and go, huh, 5% sounds good. We actually go through and look at what if our students are on the cusp or just ready to make it? What does that look like at each school? How many at each grade level would we need to push to that next level to raise that proficiency? And what's realistic to do that in the next few years? So it's a lot of detailed analysis that goes into that 70%. Some of the things that we're doing for improvement, now that we have these assessments, you can look and see, wow, the fourth grade team at Somerset School really, really doing a great job. Let's figure out what they did and share it. We're looking at our second grade curriculum, we're realizing the place value needs a little extra work. Fractions is still really hard for some of our students. We're working on vocabulary and conceptual understanding, and then we're really working on that structured math talk for collaboration. Some principals and some teachers worked with me last year and really stepped up and have been doing a lot of professional development in this area. Big improvement already in my classroom walkthroughs that we've been doing. We also talked about graduation rate. That was our initial baseline of 92%. By 2018, we want to be at 95. We're still at the 92%. Some of the things that we will be working on, our English learner students at the high school level did not have a lot of access to guidance counselors, those kind of things. We realize that that's an area of weakness, so we're gonna be working on that. We're also, as we work on some of the social-emotional learning, believe that that will help more students graduate in four years. Also, we're getting better at identifying those students that are struggling earlier through the PLC process. We also have a measurement on the dashboard, freshman on track to graduate. This is a state criteria. The state sets what this standard would be and also reports that out to the public. Just for a reminder, it's that they have at least 10 credits and have no Fs in a core content area. Our initial baseline was at 90.9, the goal was 92, we're at 93.7. So we may actually need to look on whether we want to keep that there or whether we want to raise that a little bit. Some of the credit for this, both of our high schools do a really good job with freshman orientation. They've been working on what that looks like. We're also getting more rigorous in our middle school standards, and we're also identifying students that are struggling at an earlier period than or prior. On the ACT scores is where I want to take the opportunity to give you a glimpse into what it looks like to dive into the data a little bit further. So our initial baseline was 23.7, our goal for 2018 was 24.1. You can see where we hit for 2015 status. So that, of course, and every year we go through and look through at this, but because we went down a little bit, I also want to take the opportunity to show you some of the drill down of that data. The deeper analysis does show that there's a difference between North and South, and I'm gonna go through with that, but there's many, many levels to those differences. As a principal or as a school improvement team, one of the things that you want to ask yourself when you're looking at data is how good is good or how bad is bad? Because if you look at comparative data, it's really good to know whether, well, are both high schools really good and just one is better than the other? Are both high schools not so good and one is just better than the other? So you have to look outside of the context as well. This next slide, and I don't expect you to make a whole lot of sense of all of this other than it is a tool that the Chicago Area Directors of Curriculum Assessment, we use this, and we use it to look at high schools that are like us with a similar percentage of low-income students. Because one of the questions that was, that we wanted to look at when you look at our ACT scores, we do have an achievement gap between our low-income students and our non-low-income students. So what this shows, the black solid line up there is what an expected rate of growth would be for low-income students. The yellow triangle right there in the middle is South, which is just above what that expected level would be, and then North is over here. Sorry, North, that's not orange, but blue did not show up. So, you know, we wanted to see what that, you know, what that looks like. So you can see, both of our high schools are having our low-income students perform better than the expected, but North is doing a better job with that group of students. So given that, then what you really want to look into is, well, are the students coming into South and North on an equal playing field? Because if everybody is growing at the same rate, but the students that are coming into South are at a lower functioning rate, that's a different dilemma, right? It's still one that as a whole district, we need to solve, but it's a different issue. So we looked at this, and let me explain because it's a lot of numbers. Our eighth graders take Explorer tests, so we have a good indication for where they're at eighth grade on what their predicted levels on ACT should be. So this is a good way for us to kind of look at what came into North and what came into South. So for those ACT scores I just talked about, this graph is how those same students did when they were in eighth grade. So as they came in as freshmen, and this is same students, we didn't just look over percentages, so same students, this is what it looks like. And I want to draw your attention to the low-income scores. Okay, so North is across the top, South is across the bottom. The low-income scores for math and for reading. If you look at the percent that we're ready, going in on low-income students, for math is 37 at North, and it's at 20 for South. For low-income students for reading, 43% at North. The low-income students for South are 22%. Other things, pretty different. So you might say, okay, middle schools, elementary schools, you need to really get on it. Could be something that you would look at and say by this, but you need to look at some trend data too. So now, what I want to show you is, this is this year's current freshman. So now, these are the students that are sitting in our classrooms as freshmen. Same type of information, how they did on Explorer. Now look at your low-income students for math, 26 to 21. For reading, 27, South is at 39. So you can't always say, well, the students are coming in higher at North or South. There are variations and differences at each grade level and each year as they come through. So you have to look at several years before you can say, this is a trend and this is why this is happening. Yes?
You have a column for non-low English. Is that non-low English language learners?
No, there's an English part of the test that is grammar and those kinds of things, and then there is math. Yep, good, good question. So the data that I thought was really useful is this slide. Okay. So over here on the bar column is the eighth grade Explorer test, and you have various ranges of students. You have students that are already at a 20, 25 on eighth grade Explorer, superstars. You have students that are below 12 that we're really worried about. Not gonna spend a whole lot of time on this because there's only nine students and 22 students in those groups, and just a couple variations when you have nine students throws the trend data all out the window. Then let's go over to that amazing amount of growth that District 200 does with 6.79. That's really great. So those columns then, and the blue is North, of course, and the next with the W in the middle is South, and you've got what percentage of students that were already high are making that amount of growth. It's pretty hard at that high level to keep making that growth. So for our really high students, fantastic opportunities and growth. Then you look across what's the average growth, then that magic number, that's the ACT that's greater than 20, that's the College of Career Readiness that's set across the nation with what that looks like, and then the average ACT composite score. Here's where we're gonna work. And that is kind of a trend that we're seeing, that those middle students, those students that are solid, they're average students, eighth grade, we do have one high school that's doing a little better job with that, and I'll talk about some of the school improvement plans and things that they're doing to address that. But I wanted to do this whole exercise to just give you a glimpse on how we really drill in, and you have to look at data in multiple, multiple ways in order to be able to come up with a solution and talk about what the schools need to do.
Faith?
Yes?
You mentioned that we're doing really well, percentage-making average district growth of 6.79. What's the kind of the standard average for all schools?
Right. Well, it depends on which school you're talking about, but six or even less than that is a really solid, good score. So we're above that on what that growth rate should be, but six is you're doing well, right? And a lot of schools aren't at six, so that isn't like a state average. Oh, good, good question. Yes?
Is it just that South has more English language learners and lower income than North?
No, also good question. The percentage of students that are low-income is actually higher at North than it is at South. The percentage of English learners kind of fluctuates a lot. There are very different types of English learners. We tend to have more students that are just coming out of being a refugee and that kind of thing at North than we do at South, and we have a much higher percentage of students that are Spanish-speaking students at South where we have more diverse languages at North. But the percentages are not that different. Yes?
I just want to again understand that chart a little bit. Let's say if we look at the Explorer composite, and we take, for instance, the 16 to 17 grade. So there's roughly 90 students at each school. So the percent average district growth, that one I'm confused about.
Okay, so our average district growth is 6.79. So this represents 56% of those 93 students are making that average district growth.
What does the average district growth mean? The score?
So the growth from the eighth grade Explorer to the ACT.
Okay, so if I went back a page and it said they were, and again, I'm trying to get a better handle on that. So the, what's the divider there and the numerator?
So for the percent-making difference, you're different of growth. So if you have, so you've got 93 students at North that run that 16 to 17 range, we took what their scores were as eighth graders, took what their scores were as ACT, and if the difference was that 6.79 or higher, then they're in the yes category, and you take that number of students divided by 93 and you get your 56%.
Okay, so it's a barrier from eighth grade to freshman?
Correct. It's the amount of growth, right. It's the amount of growth from eighth grade to the time they took the ACT. And then this next column is that average growth from eighth grade Explorer to the ACT. And then the next percentage is just how many kids met, what percentage of kids met that bar of 20, and then the average ACT.
So if I look at that percent-making average district growth, other than those eighth grade students in the top line, 20, 25, every, no worth is substantially higher across every percentage, every range of scores versus South.
Correct.
So do you have any idea what is causing that?
Sure. Big, huge question. As we look at, and some of this is classroom walkthrough data, some of, there's not one, here's what we need, you know, what we need to do. If you look at what South has decided to do, they're working on vocabulary across the levels. They also are working on engagement within all the levels. And as we do classroom walkthroughs, one of the things that needs to happen at all schools, but I would say a little bit more at South, is our I-level classes and those classes that aren't, you know, our AP level, all of that kind of thing, are really, really focused on increasing the rigor and the engagement that happens within those classes. That may not have been as precise as you want, but I could, you know, we...
You have a whole nother meeting just a minute.
More than one. Right. Some of that is making sure that the PLCs are functioning, doing what they're supposed to do. Some of that is making sure that the culture is very welcoming. You probably saw that South is doing 100% for 100%, really trying to make sure that all students, regardless of what income, what ability level, all various things, feel really welcome into that climate. When you think about the FIT learning environment, it's we have an environment that everybody can collaborate and create in, and that means that they have to feel a part of that community.
Faith, you have a quick question.
Yeah.
When students are taking, say, a final in a poor class, as for one, just pick a class, geometry, would they take the final? Is it the same final at North and the same final at South? And are we able to even look at, dig down and look at, look at that and see how they're doing at that level?
Most of our PLCs, and that was a big push of mine since I've gotten here, is to have similar summative assessments, whether it's at the end of the year, finals or that. So most of our PLCs and courses are that way, but not all of them yet. Yes, we can get in and look at that data. We're also making sure that those performance assessments are high enough of level that it's going to pick up what it needs to do to be a predictor for ACT. So yes, there's been work on that, and a lot of our assessments are at that high level, but there's still work to do to bring them all up to that level and have them all be on the same page. So we're well past beginning, but we're not totally finished with that project.
Numbers are very revealing on this chart. Is there a similar chart that was done last year? Did you present that to us last year, and I just forgot about it?
We have not presented this chart, but I have gone through and looked at that because, as I said, if you just go back to this and this, you wouldn't, oh, well, that was not good. Thanks, Rod. So you don't want to look at just one year's trend data because then, well, what if, what if last year it was the total opposite? That is in case there are similar trends for those students that are not in the really top, top group of what needs to be done for North and South. Thanks, Rod.
Can you, you know, just to, again, fast point of the 18, 19, and down, you know, there's basically a very different standard there between the two schools. Can you be a little more specific of how we're addressing to change that, I guess? You know, because I'm thinking maybe I'd be more closer, and particularly it looks like, I feel like it's a trend line that, or not a trend line because we don't have good data, but there, you know, there's strata that are of information and it's consistent and that's what troubles me.
So one of the things that you've heard me talk about a lot is classroom walkthroughs and looking to see what the structure looks like at both of those schools. We didn't just do this itself, but last year when I got together with principals and we're really making a focus, as I've been here, to have principals be instructional leaders, and we talked about what can you do with that. And all of the principals decided collectively that they needed to do classroom walkthroughs and look for the same thing that I do on a regular basis. South has really taken up on this, and they have done several classroom walkthroughs with a common lens of what I use. They've brought in their department chairs, so there's more people to look at that and to support things that they've noticed that might need to be fixed, and then also to identify things in classrooms that they've seen to provide professional development. that they've seen to provide professional development to do that. And Dave and his staff, Dave Claypool and his staff, are talking with me about what those classroom walkthrough things look like, and then my staff is still doing that to make sure that we're seeing the same concerns and addressing the same needs. Now, North and all the other schools are doing that too, because it is just what is good practice, but South is doing it a lot more regular basis and is really, really working on that. And then we really got in with Julie, Oza McCosky, my director of school improvement. She sat down with all the South department chairs and they looked through this data and talked about what does it look like for each of their departments and their different courses, and identified these students by name. Let's look at what our sixteen, seventeen group of kids look like. Let's look at our eighteen, nineteen students and what they look like, and do we have them in the right courses? Are they at the right rigor? And being able to identify them sooner. So the, it's multifaceted. I also talked about the community, because we do have to make sure that all students feel welcome, that they have friends, that they're involved in clubs and activities to keep them interested in school, so that's a critical component of this as well. It is about really looking at formative assessments and making sure that kids are making progress. And that happens on a granular level as well as a district level. We can sit at the district office and say, okay, here's the things that need to make improvements. But the real improvement happens with classroom teachers and instruction. And there has to be a system that that's looked at by, by me, by the department, by the administration at South to make sure that we're moving those students. And sometimes it's twelve students that you're talking about. When you're looking at eighty-nine students, you know, the percentage difference, well, it says fifty-six to thirty-six percent. We're not talking about hundreds of students. We're talking about moving few. And we really gotta get in now, that, I'm not trying to minimize the difference, but we are talking about the difference and pushing a few more students, a few more points. So we have to look at engagement, we have to look at learning targets. We know what is good instruction. That's not a mystery. It's really difficult to do because you have to differentiate, you have to know students, you have to build relationships with them, you have to get them interested in, you have to have them own the learning. We know, it's not a secret on what we need to do. It's having a system wide to be able to do that. Both high schools are talking about how do we run some more summer school types of programs or reduce summer bridge so that we can get more students time to do that. Both high schools are talking about how do we get more interventions to the students that need it earlier within the confines of the school day? Both schools are talking about, are we having conversations with some of our students that we typically haven't had conversations with about how to get them into advanced placement classes? All of those things, now, it may not decrease the achievement gap if North gets just as good as doing more of that than South, but some of those things are already happening to a greater degree at North, as indicated here, but we know what to do and there's plans in place. And I think Claypool really did a good job on Institute Day and talking with this whole student on Assembly about what needs to be done as a school to make sure that everybody's owning that they're full potential.
Faith, was there any reason why in the first column, everything was on a two-point, a one-point separation, twelve to thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, and all of a sudden the top category went from twenty to twenty-five? Was there just not a variance, a significant enough to break that down?
So if you think about ACT and the percentage of students that get perfect on ACT, there's not very many.
I would know about that.
Well, there's not too many. So that upper, that upper level of lumping that twenty to twenty-five, even lumping all that together, you're still at a hundred and six students and a hundred and twenty-two. So we were trying to get a range so that we had a similar grouping of numbers of students for each of those, so there wasn't a, you know, a huge gap. You could look at what's the twenty-five, but you'd be back to looking at five students, six students, things like that.
Is there any way, you know, we're looking at this annually, obviously. Is there any way that this can be more closely viewed, whether it be semi-annually or something? You know, again, I don't want this to get away from us, I guess is the bottom line. You know, I mean, when you say there's only a few student movements, I mean, realistically, there's five hundred students at each school, it looks like, and really only the top hundred in that categorization, so the rest, you know, we're seeing that same trend on four hundred students. So to me, that's a big piece of the thing, and I really, I really, that concerns me, you figure that. You know, it's not like, you know, eighteen to nineteen is one way and fourteen, fifteen is the other. It's across the board. And, you know, some, is there a way that could be addressed on a more, you're reporting to us a more?
Yes and no. The eighth grade explorer test only happens once, and the ACT is at one time, you get those results. So there isn't a way to be, to say, okay, they've taken another explorer test or they've taken another ACT. But the things that we are looking at with our own district assessments, the things that we're looking at for finals, the things that we're doing for classroom walkthroughs, all of those are good indicators on whether this particular measurement on the dashboard is going to move or not. Because we don't want to just, well, okay, we tried last year, great, let's see what happens, you know. We have conversations, the school improvement teams and instructional teams meet at the high schools. We bring not only the high schools, but the middle schools and the elementary schools together in November to talk about, well, what progress have you made looking at that? We have mid-year district assessments that we look at. We talk again in the spring about what this looks like. So there are many, many activities and things that we do to make sure that this is going in the right direction. There could be updates that would be given to board on those types of things. These particular measurements are only going to happen once a year.
Faith, can I add one thing to that? I guess my suggestion, I think, when you're talking about monitoring, so realize based on, based on kind of these annual checkpoints, right, that kind of give you the temperature of how you're doing, that the layer that digs down a lot deeper to that is what happens at the school level through their school improvement plan. So I think as a board, and, you know, again, you, you, I don't, I mean, I think it'd be very, very difficult for you to dig deeply into every school improvement plan, because you've got, you know, you've got twenty-plus buildings and that. So I think that's where there are probably appropriate updates, you know, Jim, so to your question, I think if there's a desire partly through the year to say, we'd like to hear a little bit more from Mr. Claypool and Weenworthville South about how is the school improvement plan going? What steps are they taking and what progress that they've, they've made personally? I think that's, that would be a more informative update than trying to pull out a set of numbers mid-year, because that's really where the, the work is happening. At the building level, I think as Faith has said, is where the dive is a lot deeper into, you know, who are those students and what does their learning progression look like and what are we doing to alter it?
I guess, you know, I'd love to hear, see any data that we could look at to make sure we're on track so that a year from now, we don't see the same trend. You know, that's what I'm trying to say, what can we do administratively, obviously, to, to really make sure these, these gaps are narrowing and the achievement levels are getting better? I mean, you know, and, you know, year by year is a long time to me, so whatever we do internally, that, you know, whether it's interim recording, whatever, I think that's really good. I think it's something we really need to address.
And one of the things that we did to reorganize my department is, since I've gotten here, I wanted to have a high school director of instruction really focus in on that. And we were able to reorganize, and now all the elementary and middle school principals are being evaluated by me and we reorganized. It was budget neutral, it was budget neutral. But this year, we have a high school director of instruction who is spending time at high schools daily, who is already, both high school principals would tell you is having an impact on coaching, bringing alignment, talking about the finals pieces of having them be there. And I do believe that that also is going to have an impact, and it's because of looking at data and things like that, that I made another push of, we need to have a director of instruction at high school. So it's not like, oh geez, we just saw this, and there has been some planning and some, and some thought and a lot of conversation last spring and this summer on how to address this too.
I'd like to add that Weenworthville South is one of my adopted schools, and I met with Dave Claypool about a month ago. He was very upfront about it, and you talk about diving into data, I know he has done it. And he's identified the areas that they need to focus on, they're focusing on. And I support Jeff's suggestion here, that if we want to hear our staff's report on the school improvement plan for South, that's something we ought to pursue.
You know, in that same regard, I think there was, I recall a discussion about the, you know, the PLCs were better received at some schools and others, and I don't want to address tonight whether that was at South or North or wherever it was, but, you know, I'd be curious. We have, again, a lot of retirees coming up, so these are student performances. I'm curious a bit, you know, we're also going to be looking at, you know, teacher performance in the near term. That's going to be an issue. You know, if there's any, you know, did we have more new teachers at one school or the other, or, you know, things like that? Do we look at that aspect of it at all? And/or what I'll call that, you know, cooperation within the PLCs? Do we look at that kind of data in this too? Because I think that's critical to the process.
We do look at the number of PLCs that are reporting how far along they are through the process and their memories, but that high school is a lower level of adapters or into that. That's kind of common when you do this at K-12 district, that the high schools take a little longer to work on that. There wasn't a big discrepancy between North and South of reporting, you know, where they're at. With that, we don't, I know Dr. Remmer could, you know, let you know like which schools have new teachers, but we have really great new teachers, we have some new teachers. You have people that are retiring, they're fantastic, and people that maybe aren't, you know, superstars. So I wouldn't necessarily look at that, well, they have more new teachers, so maybe that would be the cause of it, because there are, there's great teachers, whether they're their first year or their last year before retirement, and there's, you know, good teachers at both of those levels. So you could look at that, but I think the collaboration piece and the effectiveness of what they're doing and what their data looks like on a daily basis when you go in and do classroom walkthroughs is a better dataset to look at. Yes?
Faith, you know, I believe that North implemented the resource period, you know, a year before South. And essentially, North was the pilot. I think it was only a year, wasn't it? And, and where students who are struggling are able to go in, they have a time slot.
An access period.
Access period, where they're able to go in and get some help. Could this, part of this difference be attributed to, to that happening a year, you know, before?
That certainly could contribute, but it's the, you know, how much weight do you put on that that created that? Reducing the R-level courses happened a little faster at North than it, than it did at South. That also could have an impact. There's lots of things that could have an impact on this course, so it's hard to say this is it. Because if you knew definitively what that was, it'd be a lot easier to fix.
I'm not assuming, I'm not suggesting that there was one cause, but I, I do believe just from a kind of common sense standpoint, that has, that has to be at least a contributing factor. How much it's contributing, like you say? I'm not sure, but the fact that students who are struggling are able to get help during the school day outside the confines of a regular classroom, where a teacher maybe has three extra minutes at the end of a class period, to me, that has to be something that probably helped and maybe helped some of the students who are in the, the lower explorer ranges, because those are the kids who are going to need the help. And I think what Dave is doing a really good job of addressing as well this year is to get the kids who need help to ask for it. You know, and like you said, by making them feel welcome and making sure they understand that teachers care and will be there for a chance to chat, some of the things that are going on there with the advisory groups, you know, are just really phenomenal, and we're geared toward making the students feel welcome and wanting to learn, so.
I was curious, when you do a walkthrough or principal does, what does that look like?
Okay, well, it's kind of slick these days, because I have it on my phone. I can carry my Chromebook around, but we have a list of what's good instructional expectations. We share it with everybody ahead of time, they've had training on it. But we go through and we look for is a learning target posted, because that's good research on what that looks like. We look to see whether students, because it's one thing for it to be on board, it's another for students to be able to say what the learning objective, what the learning target was. We look for the level engagement, we count the number of students in the classroom that, you know, might be off task, look for what that percentage of engagement would be. Explicit vocabulary instruction is definitely research based on what is really going to drive some of this achievement. So we look for explicit vocabulary instruction. We look for differentiation to see if there are low-level questions as well as high-level questions, and many of our classrooms will even do differentiated assignments, what that looks like. We look for collaboration, are students having a time to be able to talk with one another? And is there a structure to that? You know, not just, hey, Erica, what'd you get on the math problem, you know, that kind of stuff, but will you explain your math strategy? And then, now it's my turn, you have to listen, restate what I said, you know, so there's some structured pieces to that. We also look for, is there a formative assessment at the end? Because all students should know by the time they leave that classroom, and the teacher should too. Who got the learning target for today? Because if ninety-five percent of the students got the learning target for today, that's really different feedback for tomorrow's instruction than twelve percent of the students got the learning target for today. And students need to be able to reflect and know that piece of learning, but the teacher also needs that information. There are some specific things we look for, English class versus math class versus science class, but those are the general things. So I go through, I put it on my phone, it all collects it into a Google form. I walk back and can have a conversation with the principal right then. Seventy-two percent of the classrooms that we saw today had learning targets. We write them down so they can see all what they were. This is the percentage of students, of classrooms that we saw that had explicit vocabulary instruction. Then we build that across the district. We've just done all of those classroom walkthroughs, we finished all the elementary schools this week, we've done all of the middle schools, and we've done South. So, and now building principals are building that schedule and using the same criteria that we use and collecting all of that data. So when I sit down with them, they're saying, really? Because I thought we were at ninety-two percent. You know, so we're having a really good conversation, and they know their classrooms much better because they're doing this on a regular basis, and it continues to be really clear about what our expectations for instructions are with the teachers. And then we have a great conversation about, well, who needs some help? What should professional development really look like? And it's based on what we saw, not just when I'm sitting in my office going, well, what do you think we should do on Institute Day? That's probably much more of an answer than you wanted, but I could all, I could do a classroom walkthrough. Keep going? All right, so this is another indicator on our dashboard. This is, as you remember from the chart before that, the percent of students that have that ACT composite of twenty or higher. Our initial baseline was seventy-four percent. The goal by two thousand and eighteen is seventy-eight. We went down a little bit. Broke it out for you by North, South, and the district as a whole with three years of trend data. The same things that we talked about for improvement and all of those conversations that we've had in the slides before this will also affect this. But this is much more impacted by what we're doing for our average students. Because if you remember this chart, this also includes some of those students that were already at twenty and what that needed to look like. So in order to get a higher percentage of students at that twenty or higher, we're going to have to really reach those students that are average or solid students, but not the off-the-charts really high students, because they're already there. All right, we're also keeping track of percentage of students that get a three or higher on advanced placement exams. This is really high stats already. District Two Hundred, and you know, I've talked to you many times, we've gotten awards for what this looks like on our percentages, but we decided, let's do some more. Dr. Schuler brought in a possible program that we could purchase that really looks at, looking at students by individual, and it's kind of slick and it's, it's all the stuff. And to give our high school staff credit, is that we can do that. We don't need to spend the money on that. And they're really working with Julie and have come up with plans to look at by students as individuals. How do we look at it for our number of low-income students, our students by girls, boys, race, all that kind of thing? And where are the holes between the different schools on students that might be ready? They look as middle school students and as freshmen, like, they can really do this. But nobody's maybe tapped them on the shoulder and said, this would be a good idea. Or we haven't had them be involved in a summer school bridge program that really gives them the extra skills if they're ready to just get that next level so that they could be successful in an advanced placement program. So staff is really working on this, they've had several meetings, they've got a solid place. We just talked about it again at Tuesday at the high school principal meeting. But the key on this is they're looking at students as individuals. People are having face-to-face conversations, says, you know, your scores are pretty good. What do you think about taking this course? And then thinking about what kind of support they need. They're an English learner that has just gone back, you know, what kind of extra support do they need to be able to get that higher? do they need to be able to get that higher grade? Because you just don't want them in advanced placement courses and then they don't do well. That's not the point. We've got to make sure as they get in that they've got the support they're getting.
But what role does the counselor do in this? I mean, I thought that was part of their job is to give good guidance and make sure these kids land in the right class.
That's true. It is the job of the counselors to go through and look at that, but we need to make sure that the counselors have a list of those students that maybe aren't saying, hey, what do you think about me taking advanced placement course? Or maybe they haven't been in honors classes and that kind of thing, but their scores are actually high enough that we could push them to that level. Or saying, hey, would you be interested in doing that if we could get you to a summer bridge program over the summer? And opening that door, those opportunities and having conversations with those students that didn't jump, jump out as, hey, advanced placement courses are for you. But I think maybe within just a little bit more reach of some more students and making sure that the counselors, as well as the teachers, have a list of those students, because we can look back on what their scores were on district assessments or how they did on Explorer and, and kind of have an indication of whether they would be a good fit. And they haven't always had that extra push or tap on the shoulder by the counselors. This is going to help them have that opportunity.
So 3% drop, what, what do you, I mean, it can't be someone tapping them on the shoulder. I mean, it's got to be, it's got to be something greater than that for that to drop 3 percentage points. What do you think that baseline to 2015 status caused, what was, what caused that?
We did put more students in. This is the, this is the percentage that got through. You are going to have a little fluctuation as what that gets through. Where, as you look at where our trend data was, that we were going up and up, this is the, this is the drop, but we aren't on the trend data to drop. So we believe, you know, next year, hopefully I'll still be invited back and we'll be talking about this, that that is going to correct itself. But we've been on the trajectory to continue to improve. We've taken a little bit, but I don't think that that's an issue, an issue to be really concerned with, because you are going to have some fluctuations in that number.
And also, Mr. Kimby, I know if you remember when we got this last award for the percentage of students taking our, our test, because it had grown so much. Even the, the lady who came from the college testing service to inform us of our award, she was amazed that we had increased our reach as well as improved our scores. So, so, because typically if you have, if you reach out a little bit more, you should see a drop in scores, because it's just, you've got some students who maybe are just at their cusp, as Mrs. Doffus said, so, so, you know, I think this was expected. I don't think we should do this as, as a negative.
We have to keep close tabs on it.
Right.
But this process that we're putting in place is really going to keep close tabs on that. It's still an excellent, excellent percentage of that 40%. I still field some bone calls of, what are you doing over there? To make that happen.
Real quick, do the majority of the students who are in AP class actually take the test? Or do we see that, you know, I'm just thinking, we have that new freshman class this year who's taking the AP. I could see, you know, having never done it before, the number could drop a little bit, but that's going to, you know.
Sure.
Go into that.
So not all students decide that they're going to take the AP exam. So you could be in the AP level classes, as you pointed out, and not necessarily sit for the exam. Sometimes that's, that transpare, you know, how are we going to get to the extra study skills and the extra tests? Test prep and there's groups and things that a lot of the teachers run for that. Some of our students may not have access to that, so that's that support piece that they might need in order to, like, you can sit for the test. You know, we'll, we'll help you out with that. Or having enough confidence to actually do that. So you're exactly right. It varies by course of what the percentage of students that actually sit for the exam is, but that's part of this too, of, well, you could, you could, you could do that. But some students, even though they're taking lots and lots of the advanced placement courses, they may decide, I'm not really interested in taking the exam piece, because they're not trying to necessarily do it for additional, additional, additional college credit.
What's the baseline? Is it the same in all cases with, is it last year's data or?
Yes.
Do you think there's any of those students that probably could, could have a desire to take the test, but possibly the financial element is another, and how, how could we maybe help them, I guess?
Right. Our, our counselors do have conversations with that and we do have some, you know, funds and things that are available to do that. But we have to make sure that our counselors are being very diligent in, in offering that and the opportunity for that. That's also a really good point.
Could you be a little clearer on what that question was? I think that's important to recognize, and I'm not sure, the way it was asked and responded to was clear. What financially should we be talking about?
To sit for the exam for advanced placement, there are fees and there are things that come from the college board. This isn't like a, you know, a district 200, but, so there is a fee that's associated with that and not all families or students may be interested in paying that fee and taking the test. All right. Okay? Yeah?
Jim and I were just talking before the meeting about his son took AP courses and his colleges are recognizing them. So that's a key piece to get the colleges to accept.
You were going to add?
Well, and there are many colleges who don't recognize the AP in terms of giving your student college credit. On the other hand, there are many colleges who, even though they won't give you credit, they expect that you take them and you won't even be considered for admission without having taken them. So, you know, it's, it's always, in my view, if you're going to, if you're going to go through the, through the process of taking the class, sit for the test. The worst that can happen to you is that you just got credit for taking the class and not, you know, I mean, to me, it's a, it's a, it's a no-brainer to kind of take that test if you can, you know, overcome some of the situations that Mrs. Doffus talked about.
To add to that, the enrollment at COD, the enrollment at any, most four-year schools is going down right now. So there's probably less people just taking exams for that reason as well. So I think this, this one troubles me far less than anything we looked at before, so, you know, I think this is kind of just a, you know, reflection of economics or just the standard deviation within, so.
Right. It's still something for us to look at and is already at that really good level, though. We're, we're fine tuning some of the great things we're already doing, not overhauling what we need to do. And there are things that go into, that, that impact which students take these tests, which colleges accepted. All of those things play into these numbers. All right. I think I'll keep going. So now I want to just, yeah, it's already 8:30, I'm going to talk briefly, but, so we want, I want to talk a little bit about what those plans are for school improvement. You had an insert into your green folder that was just a quick highlight of what the school improvement plans were. And what I really want to kind of make sure everybody understands is that schools need to have differentiated school improvements. And while you've got the really short, short summary of just what the goals are in standards mastery and collaboration and creation, there are really fine details about what's going to happen with which PLCs. What does professional development look like? What does, what measurements and tools and progress monitoring are they going to look at to make sure that things are? So you have a snapshot and a summary. This Friday, the school improvement plans will also be posted, so parents and community members can look at the details that are in there as well. So all district 200 schools this year talked about standards mastery and they picked which standards that they're going to look at as, and looked at whether reading and math, when it's going to be assessed off the district assessments, how are we going to grow? Also looked at the instruction that goes into that when I'm talking about learning targets and the walkthroughs, formative assessment. And then they also looked at what collaboration and creation means, because that's a big piece of that learning environment. It's also a part of the social emotional learning standards that need to be incorporated. So while every district 200 school focuses in on those things, each school needs to be unique. Kind of the best analogy I can think of is if we're all going to say that we need to exercise more and we need to eat healthier, okay? We're all going to do that. But what eating healthy, what's going to help you eat healthy and what's going to help me eat healthy isn't going to be different. I could say we're all going to do kale, three meals a day. This is not going to work for some of you, right? You have to differentiate. If I said, we're all going to exercise, my favorite time to exercise is 4:30 in the morning. Are you all with me? Right? No? But the important thing is that we exercise or we try to eat better. The same thing with school improvement. They've got to work on standard mastery, they have to work on collaboration and creation, but different schools are in different places of what they need, both in professional development and what they identify as goals. The important thing is they figure out what that is and then we differentiate our support. So we kind of hold them tight, but we say, okay, what are you going to do to eat healthier? What are you going to do to improve reading? And then we kind of group those students, because if you look through the school improvement, there's common threads. Let's group those schools and say, okay, you're all working on mathematical problem-solving in the real world. Okay, we can provide professional development and coaching that's tailored just to that. When we're talking about students need to have time to collaborate and create, we can do that with all kinds of groups of students. So we, we group the schools and provide it as group, but we also look at it as individual. So each school has to look at academic standards, social emotional standards, their professional development, and how they're going to monitor it. And that has to be different for each school, because they're in different places, they have different clientele, they have different strengths within their staff. Maybe they did a really great thing that, you know, 40% of their staff has master's degree in math instruction. That's a different look than you had a whole bunch of new teachers that are really working and maybe they get methods, but they don't totally get math instruction. So at district improvement, what are we doing? We continue to do professional development that's aligned to what they do. Classroom walkthroughs is a huge piece of that. And then the professional development piece, we, we hired a speaker for both of the high schools on September 25th that was aligned with what they wanted to do. We have a new director of high school instruction. I also have a middle school director of instruction and elementary to really focus their efforts on that. And then our director of school improvement, Julie, goes around to each school and helps them with data, helps their school improvement teams look through this, because it's important that the school improvement plan's not just the principal thing. If it's a written document that they turn in to me but doesn't mean anything, it doesn't work. So we had to make sure that their whole team and their whole staff knows what the plan So again, the focus, what we're working on, collaboration, creation, and standards mastery. The collaboration and creation piece, because I've spent a ton of time talking about standards mastery, is really applying that social emotional learning standards and small group work, because we have to teach students how to interact with each other. It doesn't just happen naturally. We have to give students a lot of opportunities to create and build. And the big focus is teachers posing problems, not giving the solutions and being the lecturer. And there's still a great time to be a lecturer, about 40% of that time, but we've got to focus on the other parts of collaboration and creation too. How do we measure this? That's a little more difficult, but those classroom walkthrough pieces on engagement, small group time, all of that helps us measure how we're doing on collaboration and creation. Just want to remind everybody, I know I already put this slide up there, but what we have to do, and we talked about ACT and they've got to have those things to get their tickets into where they're going to go, but along with things like ACT, we've got to make sure that they can collaborate, they can adapt, they can create, all of those things that are really important on determining their success for after they leave us as well. All right. Questions on this part before I give my four-slide update on some curriculum updates?
Would you say Julie? The one of the key components to whether a school is successful, which is, this is a, you know, a statement that is the principal, I mean, if they internalize, can reach out to their staff and really vocalize what this whole thing is, is going to make or break it?
Right. Absolutely. You have to have principals as instructional leaders. And I was principal for 12 years and when some of us went through, it was all about management. You know, was everybody safe? Were they all hired? Did we have the food service that we needed to have? And all of those things are still super, super important, but it needs to be about instruction. Lots and lots of research that the effectiveness of what we go with instruction, you can have pockets of great teachers, but you need to have an instructional leader. And part of that, if you look at just what it takes to make complex change, is having a clear vision for what we're all going to do. That's that school improvement plan and what that looks like. When I talk with principals a lot, we talk about the importance of the balance between task and relationship. Really great leaders do both of those things. You can be a good leader, be really great at task, and people will excuse some of your relationship stuff. Or you can be really good at relationships and people can tolerate some, but to be really great and take it to the next level, you've not only got to have a plan and be good at executing tasks, but you've got to be good at building relationships with parents, with staff, with students, and having that community sense. So definitely, our, our principals need to manage complex changes, they need to be able to have difficult conversations, they need to be able to manage their time enough that they're getting out in classrooms. The principal job is really busy. You can have a full time just answering emails and, and all of those things. So you have to put in time. And I was really impressed with our principals that they decided with me, that all right, we're all going to do classroom walkthroughs, we're all going to turn in the schedule to me, we're all going to report to Phoebe how we're doing on all of those and help each other through those pieces. So without a doubt, you have to develop your principals as instructional leaders. I'm really enjoying this year having all elementary and middle school principals all together in our conversations about evaluations and how much the school improvement plans are playing into those evaluations. Am I exhausted, do we keep going? All right. Curriculum updates, really quickly. Want to talk about science, English, language arts, math, and FIT. So on science, the new generation science standards are so aligned to what we're doing with FIT, it's unbelievable. It's about collaboration and creation. It's about engineering practices. It's about students creating products and revising them and thinking about what it needs to be, and it's about open exploration for them defining and getting science knowledge. Really great with our FIT environment. We've got a draft of the standards completed for K-5 that will be coming to a school board meeting near you very soon. We're piloting two sets of materials right now. You can imagine our elementary teachers where I've just said, we're redoing all of your math, we're redoing all of your English and your reading and your writing, and now we're going to do science. And they need a lot of training to do that. District 200 is not like most of the other districts around, you know, we're, we're in that same boat, we're not unlike them, that a lot of the science instruction has begun to be about informational text and reading. And really, that is important. They need to be able to read textbooks, but there's so much more about science. And we've got to make sure that that's happening for our elementary schools. We're piloting materials to make sure that that's, that, and we're having some great articulation between middle school and high school. High school teachers generally have a lot more background and emphasis on really great instruction, because they have a whole content area and that's their area of focus. So we're wanting high schools to work with the middle schools to make sure some of the modeling things that we do at both high schools is also going to happen at middle school, which is much more aligned to our, our new science standards. In English, language arts, that's usually been a big part of this presentation, but they're all in place and we're all working on it. Some of the highlights, we do need some more training for writing as I go through the classrooms and look at that, especially at the middle school level, we still need to work on the writing. Our assessments are finalized, so on the dashboard, if you recall, we still need to say what is our goal and what is our baseline. Baseline will be established this year, so next year we'll have what that goal will be. And then we've started some really great work. You've probably heard about RTI, Response to Intervention. The state now calls it multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. And we're working on it, and it's the same thing, it's just a different name, pretty much. And now we're really going to be focusing, now that we have Core in place. So, and that's really important, that you have to have universal instruction of what's really good. Once that's in place, you really should start looking at intervention. So we're doing that with reading, math, and behavior at the elementary level first, soon to be followed by middle and high school. On math, new standards in place. We're going to have trend data, whether or not we have Park ever. We've got our district data and we're ready to go and we're ready to move on that. We are making a little bit of an adjustment at the middle school level. We currently are splitting for a lot of our eighth grade students, we're taking algebra over two years to get that done in eighth grade and ninth grade. We are wanting to have honors algebra still available to students at ninth grade, it just took a little more developmentally, longer to get to that point. So I've been meeting with high school, middle school principals, they're finalizing all of this. A lot of the teachers are finding out in the next couple of days. We are going to have algebra at the ninth grade level still available for honors, so at the eighth grade level, we're still having So at the eighth grade level, we're still having the same track. They're not going to be in a different place when they get there. But we're going to take a little bit more time in eighth grade for some of our students to shore up some of those pre-algebra skills. And then they would either take honors algebra or algebra as freshmen. Algebra is still a one-year, eighth grade is still going to be an option as well. And then PACE is still the same strand that it always has been. Some of that is looking at the data of what we've done with our assessments in middle school and math and the number of students that are ready to be able to take that next step. And then future of instruction and technology with FIT. So I already shared with you, we went around to each school and talked about the presentations. We've expanded that group because they're impacting so much of what we do that we wanted to have representation from every single school. We've just had our second meeting and the big focus there was talking about universal access. If you think back to our vision for our learning environment, where we want students to be able to collaborate and create anytime, anywhere. Some of the things that we need to address is the access points for our internet within our schools to make sure that that can happen. And then also, where do our students, some of our students don't have internet at home. What are some creative ways that we can do, whether it's identifying businesses that will allow that in the community, like, hey, you can come over here? Or could we, is there a way? And I don't have an answer for that, I'm just giving you some examples of things we've talked about. But is there a way for some of our apartment complexes that we could provide internet access at the clubhouse? That kind of thing, so that students could have access to anytime, anywhere information? And then also, along with that is what is that magic number of devices that needs to be available in schools so that classroom teachers and students have a device when they need it? Even the schools that have gone one-on-one say that those devices are used twenty, twenty-five percent of the day. So we've got to make sure that we have enough devices in the right places that the battery is charged, that's a big deal, to make sure that our students and our staff have that right number. And we're exploring that quite a bit. And then FIT is in all the school improvement plans this year. And it feels really good to have a long-term plan of what that's going to be. Next year, when we're talking about standards mastery is always going to be there. Collaboration and creation, we may have that in another area. It's a long-term plan of where we want to get to. I'll entertain questions again, but I wanted to take a moment to thank you for all that you do to support us and to guide us to sit through an hour and fifteen-minute presentation on student learning and have great questions for what we're attempting to do.
I have one kind of general comment. You know, I'm, I think this Vision 2018 and the data we've looked at today is a great guideline. I think it's the idea of what was behind the Vision 2018 program. It's identified good information. It's identified some things that we need to improve in it, and so on. And that's, again, what it achieves, I think, is very important. So, you know, again, you know, this has kind of made the magic you do as instructors and educators make a little sense to me, to be truthful. It's given us some comparative guidelines, which I truly appreciate. So, you know, we have buildings, we have financial issues and so on, but this is the business that we're really in. And it's very helpful to see this kind of statistical data. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Schuler, this is about to remain to this presentation, but maybe you can, I mean, maybe it's kind of part and parcel. I know that we've got a draft of the 2016-17 calendar out there. I was reviewing that the other day, and I was just curious. There might be some elements in the calendar schedule that might help maybe the student achievement as well. I mean, I'm not smart enough to figure that out. But that being said, what is kind of the next steps on that calendar? Can you just timelines on what's going on?
Sure. Actually, Bob probably can answer that. I can do it, but Bob's been working on it. Do you want to think a quick review of that?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. We've seen a number, quite a number of comments about the proposed calendar. They are, as you can imagine, across the board, covering virtually every component of the calendar in one shape, form, or another. There are some consistent themes, however, in many of the responses. Enough so that we will convene the calendar committee again to kind of take a look at what the community's input is and see if there's some way to accommodate at least some of their big concerns coming forward. So we'll see what that group has to say in terms of their perspective from the creation and the recommended one, and then give them what the community is, at least what we've heard from the community, and see if there's a way to cobble together some kind of alternative that may address some of those major concerns that we're hearing from parents out there. So I think there's a possibility at June November meeting there may be a modified or an alternate recommendation comes before the board for you to take a look at. But I don't want to get too far out of my skis, but it is. We've gotten enough and there's been enough consistent response and it's worth to take a look at again and see if there's a way that we can address some of that. And I think as we indicated in the background in the October meeting, the calendar is a migrating entity. It moves a lot. And sometimes when it moves, kind of an extreme, it raises some concerns. The difficult part is every, it is a Rubik's Cube in its true form. Everything you touch has an impact on something else. If you start later, this happened. If you don't take off here, that happens. So it's not particularly linear in connection. So we need these people that live in the building and are part of this process to sit around and take a look and see if we can find some options. And then maybe, given that, we may want to take a year to kind of take a grand look at it. There are some things that we do in District 200 that have been traditional for a long time, but, you know, I think it's probably been seven or eight years since we've kind of asked the community, what are you thinking on some of these kind of same things? Thanksgiving is a good example. Maybe we need to gather that on a maybe more systematic approach to say, what are you thinking about Thanksgiving, for example, President's Day, Columbus Day, I don't know, some of those other things that won't have big impact, but can have some impact on how that calendar moves on.
I'd like to get back on the presentation for tonight. No, you don't. I just want to say, you know, having staff for several years now on the Learning and Teaching Community Committee, I really appreciate, and I'm sure Mrs. Scrathery will feel that same sentiment, Mrs. Caiphol's sentiment, maybe Mr. Roman. You know, I'm always amazed by the level of detail and the level of understanding of the cause and effect relationships that we have in District 200. You know, thanks to your leadership and Julie's and Julie's, I'm sorry. Julie, her duty. You know. And really, you know, from, for me, for the time of Dr. Cattolani, I mean, we've really had superintendents who have been really focused on the true business of our school district. And I'm very proud of that, and I applaud you for everything that you're doing to make sure that our students leave our district in a good place. So thank you for digging down and reaching into other measures other than PARC to assess how well we are dealing with what we are given and with what we're producing. So, and I could listen to you all night, whether it's an hour and fifteen minutes or two hours and fifteen. I'm not bored with this at all. And I really appreciate all that you're doing for you, our principals, our entire staff, you know, for our students. And I think what you did tonight was a very difficult presentation to do. You saw a lot of questions on the differences in our high schools. And that's never easy to talk about stuff like that. But I think one of the things that we pride ourselves on in District 200 is being very honest, very open, and understanding that we're a really, really good district. And we're always looking to keep moving and to keep improving. And so thank you for doing that.
Here's a question. I was fascinated by the data that you showed, Julie, when you take the data, assessment data from eighth grade through high school. I'm sure you're looking at data from kindergarten through eighth grade. Can you just tell me, how's that utilized? What are you looking for there? Kind of just give me a sense of what we're doing for assessing those grade levels.
Well, where to start? Well, you get your overall, you know, we have pre-assessment to mid, so we're also looking at growth within a year. And that's really great data to look at because sometimes you're looking at what percentage of students are proficient. And if you just look at the overall, what percentage are proficient, but you don't know whether they started, you don't really know the growth added. And you need to look at both of those things. So we do look at growth over a year and the percentage of students that got to the proficiency level. We break that down by grade level and give that back to the schools so that they know. Because if you get, all right, so I'm an elementary principal and I get seventy-two percent of my fifth graders. Okay, well, those seventy-two percent in the top two schools in the district. Was it the bottom? You know, you have to have a comparison of what that looks like. And since PARC and that isn't back, we're having, we need to make sure we're providing that piece for them to compare themselves. We look at achievement gaps between boys and girls. We look at achievement gaps of low income. We look at all of those pieces. We break it down by standards so that you can see, you know, are the, are the same percentage of students mastering fractions? Because you could have a rock star PLC that gets it on fractions, but geometry? You know, so you have to look at it for those pieces too.
Specifically, you showed us some data here where the recent graduating classes from the two high schools, what their assessment stands were when they were freshmen four years ago. And you showed us where the current freshman class stands. Is that sort of data available, for example, from our fifth graders who are leaving the elementary schools and going to middle schools? So that the middle school principals can be prepared saying, you know, this is the profile of our incoming sixth grade class. So we need to probably have more emphasis on reading skills because of certain boots are coming here? Am I making myself clear on that?
We're making total sense. We've made a big improvement in the access that our principals have to that data. If you can imagine, prior to this year, Julio, amazing, kept all of this data on very elaborate Excel spreadsheets that she would, okay, as a principal calls, here you go, or I'll build this. But they needed to go through Julie or have what's delivered to them by Julie to be able to do that. With the purchase of analytics and how all that is going to look at, Julie is now going around to each of the schools, providing not only training to the principals, but to teams of teachers. So if the teachers are, okay, yes, our teachers do this. They're sitting around at midnight and they're like, huh? I wonder how my students did there? How are they coming in knowing this? They can get in and dig for it themselves and look at that. And that's going to make that access to data just so much more powerful because it'll be when they want it, how they want it. They can slice and dice it and look at it in many ways as they want to. But it is really important that our students, as they come in, that we do look at where they are for pre-assessment, know where they're at so that we can take them where they need to. A good example of that is since we've had all taken it right, our first graders are coming in stronger than the first graders used to come in. So we need to make, we need to know that, make those adjustments to push instruction at a higher level and a higher level.
Thank you, Brad. Any other questions or comments? Brad?
I don't even know how to make a question out of this, so I'm just going to, it's complicated. You know, so much of what we do is measured by data and test scores and student achievement, and it gets in magazine ratings. And half of the community gets up in arms because one school's better than the other school. But all the, a lot of what we're talking about now, FIT, and what we're talking about in the facility master planning process, and I'm dealing with this in my day job, is about, it's about how do we get kids' skills to be college and career-ready? It's not measured on a test, right? So how do we, this, I guess, is a communication question. How do we get our community, our parents, to appreciate that differently? How do we get them to have that set of expectations? They're, they're looking at schools through the lens of their own experience as students. But, you know, the world's changing, the student experience is changing. This is all great, I love this, this is fantastic, but there's another side of this that, how do we, how do we get people to appreciate? Is it even possible to get people to appreciate that what we need to do with students is not just measure them on the ACT score? Is there a question in there?
I think there was. So I'll either give an answer or just further commentary, I don't know. I think one of the interesting things that happens is, you know, I have two kids. And as you think about what's important for your own children, you're worried more than just test scores. But when you read newspaper articles and you want comparison and you want competition, well, of course, you want your school to be the best. And the only thing that the newspapers are reporting out on is something that's measurable like a test score. So I do think that a lot of parents believe that the ability to collaborate, create, speak articulately, you know, design, they're excited about that. But there's not a real forum for them to say, well, how are we doing competing with that level? So if something comes out and here's what the end game was or the results, people are going to talk about what those results are. And even in our conversation to them, they're like, well, how do we get North a little bit higher? You know, how do we, all of those pieces. So I think that parents and community members do want some of this. They may not understand that the world is changing as fast as it is. If you think about just in the last five years, how much our world has changed. And then think of our kindergartners and think, oh, what's the world going to be like in twelve years or sixteen years? We probably, if we can get a better way of communicating that out to the community and talking about that need to focus on those skills that aren't, I mean, people are talking to me, should I make a video or should I have an album? The problem is finding the communication, we agree that it's, it's finding ways for them to see or view or interact with that communication.
Or maybe even celebrate it. The story last week about North and that Google expedition, that was cool. I'm going to use that next week. But maybe it's not just communicating, but it's celebrating the great things that teachers and students are doing in the classroom or in student groups that don't have to do with, you know, do I meet a standard mastery? I mean, there's so much more than what we, so much more to what we do, or not we do, because we just sit here, but.
No, collectively, collectively, we do.
The teachers do, the teachers do that helps students learn and achieve and build skills and build strengths that go beyond. I'd just love to hear more of that, to celebrate that more, to, you know, even create partnerships with outside groups to help those students get those opportunities to partner with businesses and do other types of unique classes. There was even a report that technically you forwarded to us, Erica, about kind of branding your curriculum aspects that kind of give it more prominence. I don't know, this is something I've been feeling, not only in my work, but also in just kind of this stuff. This is, it's all about student learning. It's all about, you know, moving from a twenty-three point seven to a twenty-three point. But there's so much more to what we do that is valuable to students that go through K through twelve or pre-K through twenty-one.
Can I just make a comment on Brad's comment? And I, you know, I don't want to sound like I'm the, well, I am a senior member of the board, so I guess I can sound like the senior of the board. But one of the things I think that we have to deal with is where we are. Also, I'm tired of talking with you. You know, is where we are in our lives at the time. And, and I, you know, I've been in your place, you know, and there's just this heightened anxiety, you know, did I move to the right place? Are my kids learning what they're supposed to learn? And do I really trust the system? And I think, you know, and I only have little anecdotal pieces, but if I, if I look at, you know, what my child learned, what Jim's kids, Jim's kids, Jim, you know, all the Jims and Joanne, you know, we're in a different place. So we've seen what our school district has done for our students and how they learn. Now, how do we kind of translate all that, that later year perspective and utilize it with all the anxiety that you have as a parent when your child is in middle school and in high school especially? It would be nice to be able to bridge that. And one of the things we can do, it does cost money, but, you know, we can track our students and see, are they really successful? Not only do they get into college, but do they complete college? When they complete college, what are their careers? You know, is each student able to meet their aspirations as a result of the preparation we've given them? So I think those are some things that we need to be looking at, and they cost money. You know, they do. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. You know, they do, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. But I think those kinds of things are the, are the messages that, or that kind of data will generate the message maybe that you're looking for that says, you know, I mean, you know, and because we can talk about this, all of our, a lot of our students went to highly competitive colleges and universities, and they competed very well, they competed with the best. So I just think it's, it's another data point that we need to get to, so that when you're going through it, you don't have that, you're not looking at the newspaper who's comparing, you know, us to Hinsdale or us to Mitrer, or, because that's, that's not where you want to be. You want to make sure that your student is performing to the best of his or her ability. That's all you really care about as a parent. But, but all that other noise that comes in could really throw you off. And I don't know if I'm misinterpreting the question you're asking, but, but, you know, that's my, my sense.
I don't have any of those things.
No, I don't.
I'm fine. I don't have any of those questions.
But your, your peer group probably is.
I guess, I guess what, the point of my question was, there's another half to what our students experience at school. And I want to celebrate it more, I want to make us a more forward-looking district to create, you know, collaboration, creativity, and great communicators and all that stuff, and do, using technology. And I guess I just don't know how to celebrate that, communicate that, make sure our parents understand that in a manner that makes us look even better as a school district, because it's valuable, it's valuable skills. Everybody's talking about, everybody knows that it's critical, all the research, you know, all the Tony Wagner books and YouTube videos and everything about changing, you know, the change in education and the world. I guess I would love to see, I'd love to see that kind of stuff be even more prominent in conversation in future discussions on student learning, because it's critical, and this is all great, maybe we just have a whole other meeting just on that, if it's even possible to celebrate.
Right, and as I did go. I love to make this presentation with lots of the staff members, almost every school, if you can send me a presentation, I'm meeting with parents tonight. If they, can I have slides, you know, seven through 10? Because I still have my curriculum night presentation that's happening. So as we have more of a common message and some of those things prepared, and we're saying, hey, this is really, really important, I think that some of those things will happen. We can also, each of my directors of instruction is working with Erica to make sure that the Friday Focus has some really great things about instruction and some of those really neat activities, so that that message gets out there. But I agree with you that we need to continue to try to find more ways to talk about the great stuff that's happening, that, that FIT learning environment piece, as I just met with the assessment and directors of curriculum instruction from Olive Muda, they're like, wow, what you're talking about, because our nation has been obsessed with test scores and all of those types of things. So while those are still important, don't leave saying that fate doesn't think student achievement isn't important, because that's not true. But there's a whole other really important piece, and we do need to spend more time talking about it.
When you just mentioned the other schools, are they all on the same course of making it a priority, or are we ahead of the game on that?
I can't speak for every single district, obviously, but there were some people like, well, that are really panicked about not having the PARC results back. And again, it's kind of a pain that it's almost November and we don't have that. But we have our own district assessments, there are lots of other things that we can, we can measure. Some of this, oh, do we have our test scores back? Well, let's take time to have this conversation that we just had here. It gave me an opportunity, instead of just talking about test scores and things out at the schools, let's talk about that piece. And because the world is changing so quickly, that content that was on a multiple choice test may not even be super relevant. So we are ahead of the game of a lot of the people that I've talked to, because they're sort of like, how are we going to react to PARC, if our scores are going to be lower? And we have to, we have to develop, but we're doing really good things, we need to continue to get better. But there's a lot to celebrate with or without PARC scores.
One last, I'll bite my nut. I think the ultimate test, and I've seen it, we've met with the realtor groups lately and so on, and I think the ultimate task for this isn't grades or isn't, it's that, it's the character of our community. And I think that people move here. You know, you still see the signs on different projects saying Wheaton 200, District 200, et cetera. You know, so I mean, you know, to me, that's the ultimate test of what we're doing here. And as long as we have people that desire to live there because of the community we have, that's important, and that's, you know, we're a piece of that process. And I think, you know, we're achieving that, and we're addressing it, and so on. And I think there's a good quality of people that live here and come out of here. So, you know, that's, that's what, why I love Wheaton and want to go and et cetera. You know, it's what we are and who we are and why we, you know, we, that's the unit of measure, that I think is the ultimate. Forget about all the other pieces that build to it. So I'm happy with that.
Well, not that everybody's happy. There you go. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll move them to public comments. We do have one person sign up for public comments, so bear with me. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values and thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district and public input, and a variety of venues are very helpful. The board must take the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful of the duties of the board and demonstrate a process in the comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name, whether you're a district resident, and address your comments to the board. Limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat, present your comments to us in writing. Obviously, we won't be responding to your comments right now, but please be sure if you have a question or concern, someone from the staff will follow up with you. Harold Lox.
Good evening. Yeah, Harold Lox, I live here in the district. I just want to make a couple of comments about your comments this evening and also the presentation. I just find this one slide here about what this development means for us, it means that we can't teach the facts, formulas, the systems that our students will need in the future. I just find that a very, a statement that's, that's completely wrong. I mean, we should be teaching our kids, our students, formulas and systems and stuff, and facts, what they will be needing in the future. Matter of fact, if you, you know, one of my pet pieces is if you go to a store and your bill comes out to $19.10, so you hand the clerk $20, they key in $20, then you give them a dime, so you get a dollar back, they're totally confused. They don't know how to do the simple math. And I think this is what we're missing. I mean, talk about learning and teaching and stuff, our kids today don't have any basic skills. And I think we need to go back, you know, Brandon said something about, you know, education's changing. But, you know, there's some basic cores that, that when I went to school is going to continue going forward, and I think we need to continue that kind of teaching and learning, because it's going to help in tests and everything else. The other thing I, that came up is, you know, I mentioned something about the new standards in English, you know, writing improvements. And I, you know, I find that interesting, because when I was in the middle school, I heard that they pull all the spelling books and stuff out. So if the kids don't know how to spell, how are they going to be good writers? I just find that little unique. And the other thing is, you know, as far as, you know, we talk about keeping up with the students and technology, so how do teachers keep up with this, especially the older teachers? Because, you know, you're saying the kindergarten kids come in, they're already masters of iPads and stuff, and if you've got older teachers and so on, I mean, they're, the kids are, I mean, light-years ahead of the teachers. I mean, even my kids are light-years ahead of me when it comes to the technology in a hand, which is amazing. And then the other thing is, I've read some studies where, you know, like you, she mentioned by using Siri to look up a math problem, you just use an app, it tells you the answer. I mean, I just find that, well, that's really neat, but does that really help the kid in learning what the issue, the problem of figuring, figuring out problem solving? Because, you know, if you put a math problem out there, gives you the answer, it doesn't really, I mean, they really need to understand the concepts behind it. And there's also been studies showing that by looking up information on your iPhone and iPad, you know, whatever the information is, they only retain it for a very short amount of time, and they forget about it, then if you learned it underneath more traditional learning methods. So, you know, as much as technology's great, I, you know, I believe in it and everything else, I think we need to, you know, continue the, I would like to say, the old-fashioned way of, you know, learning and teaching too at the same time, and incorporating in, you know, technology. And I agree with, you know, a couple of things that Brad said about, you know, his, you know, comments here, too, with what's going on. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lox, and I think there's been some miscommunication, misunderstandings here, and I'm sure we'll follow up. There being no further action, we come before the board to open session. I would like to ask for a motion of a second to adjourn the meeting. Move by Mrs. Caglio.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, we adjourn.